Call this meeting to order. For the, uh, for the religions.
For the religions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this world with a repeat and endless sorrow.
Thank you. A little call please.
Mr. Brooks? Ms. Brown? Ms. Crawl?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Meow.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Lynch?
Here.
Mr. Valeski?
Here.
Mr. Voight?
Here.
Thank you. Item two A, recommend approval of the attached meeting minutes for December nine, reorganization, school board meeting, and December twenty-one, special voting.
So moved. Second. Do we have motion in a second? Any questions? All in favor will say aye.
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 Motion approved. We have one presentation today. Principal Cooper is with us, and I have a video I'd like to share with everybody from the Cambridge Springs, and then certainly Ms. Cooper can answer any questions about it and talk to us about anything else that's going on at Cambridge Springs High School. So, here we go.
Hi, my name is Olivia Martinez. I'm a senior here at Cambridge.
And I'm Audrey Bullock, a sophomore, and we're going to bring you up to date on all the positive things going on in our school.
This year, the Leadership Council and Student Senate was able to put together a powder puff football game on Friday, October twenty-third, under the lights of the football field. The senior and junior girls participated with the help of some sophomore and freshman recruits. Alongside the girls' football, there was a fabulous group of cheerleaders that took over the sidelines for the game. The senior team took home a victory that night, and the powder puff game will continue to be an annual event.
Because of COVID, the homecoming dance was limited to just senior high, and the junior high got to attend their very own dance, the first ever junior high fall formal. Both dances were filled with fun, and students from all grade levels noted that they liked the beginning of a new tradition.
Cambridge Springs has a school-wide goal each year to raise thirty tons of non-personal food to help with the community and give our extra personal spirit over the holiday season. Food is lifted for a full week, and on that Friday, St. Selen and Leadership Council brings the day organizing, reaying, separating, and packing the food. The next morning, a group of dedicated students arrive at the school at A M and helps distribute the boxes to families in the community. This year, the school, with the help from our community, raised well over the goal a total of over eighty thousand pounds of food. To encourage students to bring in more, we held a competition, and the grade level that supplies the most weight of food has the first choice in their activities to participate in during Winter Fest, which we will talk more about shortly. The National Honor Society is made up of intelligent, outstanding, honorable students who work hard to achieve their goals in school. To become a member of the National Honor Society, you must first meet the academic requirements. Following that, each student who is eligible must apply to be a participant, writing an essay and receiving a letter that tells them whether or not they are accepted. This year, ten juniors were inducted, and we held an induction ceremony during the school day in the auditorium. The N H S officers speak to the audience of parents, and the new aductees light their candles and shake hands.
As we entered into the holiday season, students showed their Christmas cheer by dressing up for a total of eight spirit weekdays, including plaid, Christmas pajamas, other sweaters, and more. Our bag-three-ton goal was met, and Winter Fest was held as an incentive the last day before break. Students chose their afternoon activities, including K D K making, Dungeon Ball, Christmas cookie making, and more. It was a great start to our winter break.
Both the girls' and boys' basketball teams are having a pretty successful season, especially considering the amount of absences they have had due to COVID. The boys' basketball team is five and four and three and oh in the region. They are looking to grow undefeated in the region for the third year in a row and are currently on a three-to-three-game region-winning streak. As for the girls' team, they returned all half of their starters from last season and are looking promising with a six-and-one record and three-and-oh in the region. They're out on the hunt for another District Ten title. The basketball cheer squad is having a really good season and are enjoying cheering on the boys' and girls' basketball teams. The wrestling team is three-and-two at the moment and are hoping to continue their season with more victories.
Clubs like Devil's Desserts Recycling Club, National History Day Club, and the new ASL Sign Language Club have been running throughout the school year. Clubs have funded school by giving students a place to express themselves by joining clubs of their interest. Our clubs do things like giving the staff and faculty sweet treats every week, collecting recycling, and participate in this year's History Day theme, debate and diplomacy.
Every year, Cambridge Springs sends multiple students to compete in P N E A's district chorus competition. Students will see the repertoire of music that they must learn and perfect in order to be judged on how well they can perform that music. They'll then get points compared to other students in their section and a chance to win a spot to advance on the regional chorus and then possibly land the states. This year, three students have the opportunity to compete, Josh Wilson, Caroline Adelson, and me, Olivia Martinez. We have been practicing our music for a few weeks now, preparing for the competition that will be on New York or Pennsylvania in the beginning of February.
Extra, extra, we know all about it. This year's pitchfork staff is composed of eleven lovely journalists who work hard to publish the bathroom news each week and an edition of the newspaper every three weeks. There's a publishing team and editing team and an overall sense of teamwork that we are all invested in to make the newspaper the best it can be. Being a part of the pitchfork has taught me and the rest of the staff elements of teamwork, how to meet deadlines, and improving writing and research skills. In physics classes, students put their engineering brains at work to build bridges out of popsicle sticks and wood glue, the goal being to hold twenty pounds for at least five seconds. The winning bridge that held the most weight was Kate and Gozer and Cody Tonner's bridge, which held exactly a hundred pounds. The teacher who ran this project this year was Mr. Cummins, who says in books, "I thought from a science and engineering standpoint that it was a valuable lesson in taught group working skills and STEM principles." Cambridge is working hard to bring the fun back to our education, straying from the boring day-to-day routine associated with classes.
We did research to embrace a positive environment and encourage more kids to come to school. We hope we can continue to improve spirits here of the little nation.
Be proud, be little!
Thank you. Principal Cooper, do you have any comments, anything you must say?
No, I think that showcases what we've brought back this year. We're really trying to bring back the activities and stuff that we missed during COVID. So yeah, the two ladies that did that, I thought it would come better from the kids instead of myself, and they did all of the script and everything themselves, so I'm super proud of them. Anyone have any questions?
I think it was a great presentation.
I'll let them know.
Yeah, now that I have it, I'll save it and store it on the district website for a couple of weeks if anybody wants to see it. And make sure that you express our thanks to them. And again, congratulations on a successful first year for you at Cambridge Springs. We're glad you're there. I know you're doing a great job, so I just wish you all the best as we continue with this year. I'm gonna head back to the agenda. Under Registered Citizens Comments, we don't have any registered, but are there any comments on agenda items from citizens? Seeing none, I'm just gonna continue to move through the agenda. Athletic Committee, Mr. Brooks, Chairman, item A, recommend approval of the following coaches resignations.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a motion in a second? Any, any questions, comments? Okay. All in favor will say aye. Motion approved. Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval to employ the following coaches, items one through four.
So moved.
May I have a motion in a second? Any questions? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval to employ Kamala Wilson as the wrestling cheer advisor for Maplewood High School effective January fourteen.
So moved.
May I have a motion in a second? Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item D, recommend approval of the student athletic travel as listed.
So moved.
May I have a motion in a second? Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Education Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman, item A, recommend approval of the affiliation agreement with Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania as attached.
So moved. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Did we get that wording in there?
Yeah, it is, I think.
Yes, the additional wording is included.
Any further questions? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached Regional Behavioral Consultants Incorporated Agreement.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Questions? Comments? If not, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of one Penncrest Cyber Academy graduate from Cambridge Springs' attendance area.
So moved. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Questions? Do we know if the students met all the state's requirements?
They have.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Item D, recommend approval of student travel as listed.
So moved. Second. On my last agenda.
Okay, thank you. I got it. Go ahead.
May I have a motion in a second?
In a second.
May I have a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the attached resources and materials in accordance with Policy one oh nine.
So moved. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Questions? Comments? If not, all in favor will say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Item F, recommend approval of the attached sale of district equipment in accordance with Policy seven oh six, property records.
May I have a motion? In a second. May I have a motion in a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston, Chairman, item A, recommend approval of the attached twenty-twenty-two Penncrest Pride Project.
So moved. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
I was just gonna make one comment.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that this is like, this is a lot of taxpayer money that's hard earned, so I just want to encourage the committees and the students to use this as an opportunity to grow and to learn, to put the money in a wise place that's gonna benefit everyone. So, I think, I mean, there's some projects that I agree with on here that are really good, and there's others that I am not a fan of, but I think students and the committees need to work hard to do what they can with the money and get the most out of it that they possibly can.
Any other comments, questions?
No, we can hear you, but we just need to make sure that this stays what the money was intended for, which is student-driven, not school board-driven, that's all.
We can hear you.
All in favor, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval to recycle obsolete maintenance and custodial equipment.
So moved. Second.
May I have a second? May I have a motion in a second? Any comments? Questions?
No.
Is that a question?
No question.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Item C, recommend approval of the listed contracted student transportation drivers.
So moved. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Questions? Comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Finance Committee, Ms. Crawl, Chairman, item A, recommend approval of the treasurer's reports.
Second.
May I have a motion in a second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item B, recommend approval of the attached dispersments.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Any questions, comments? I do have a question for the business manager. I've been receiving calls from residents of the district that somebody, one of our members posted on Facebook that we had an expenditure of between sixty-five thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars for legal fees. Could you explain that, confirm it, or make it clear?
I would have to look into that further, but that does not sound accurate. But I can get you an exact number of what we've spent on legal fees this year.
All right, thank you.
We'll run a year-to-date legal fees for the board.
Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Motion approved.
C, closure, recommend approval of the following, closing of the following Maplewood High School school accounts, Archene Spanning.
Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Item D, recommend approval of the attached two thousand nineteen-twenty school-based access program billing agreement with IU five. The reimbursement to the district is thirty-two thousand, eight hundred, twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents.
Do we have a second? May I have a motion in a second? Questions or comments? If not, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Motion approved.
Item E, recommend approval of the attached sub-brand, sub-brand contracts with Northwest Tri-County IU five for twenty-one, twenty-two I D A pass-through grants.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Aye.
Personnel Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman, we were gonna run a consent agenda, items A through G, so recommending approval of items A through G.
So moved.
May I have a motion in a second? Comments? Questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Policy Committee, Mr. Valeski, Chairman, item A, we have first reading to know motion necessary under records management as well as purchases subject to bid. Please take a look at those as time permits. Safe Schools Committee, Mr. Brown, Chairman, item A, recommend approval of the six-month mid-year review of the attached Art, Esers, Health, and Safety Plan.
So moved. Second. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Any comments, questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Item twelve, new business, item A, recommend approval to appoint Luigi D. Francesco to the Crawford County Career and Technology Center Joint Operating Committee for a three-year term effective December one, twenty-one, through November thirty, twenty-four.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second?
Second. Second.
May I have a motion in a second? Questions? Comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks a lot. Much love.
Item B, recommend approval to appoint Luigi D. Francesco to the Penncrest Education Foundation for the twenty-two calendar year.
Do we have a motion? Second. May I have a motion in a second? All in favor will say aye.
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 Motion approved.
Aye.
Item thirteen, citizens' comments on non-agenda items, we have a registered speaker, Ms. Brown.
Good evening. I would like to say as a taxpayer and as a parent, that I'm deeply disappointed in why this board voted during the emergency meeting regarding the right to no law appeal. Your board policy states that no one board member has the ability to speak for the entirety of the board as a whole. That being said, I am astounded that the board believes the district has the financial responsibility to defend the political missteps of one or two of you, and make no mistake, there was nothing more than political missteps. This right-to-know request is not about the board as a whole. It has specifically asked for more information regarding one or two people of this board and their specific communications as elected officials. I am surprised that this board is willing to take on the burden of proving that not only is the P A office of open records wrong, but that a judge within our county is wrong, and that the right-to-know law itself is in fact wrong and being misused. Precedent has sided time and time again with the idea that means of communication that public officials use is not as important as the capacity in which content was relayed, and that content is vital to our democracy. We have a right to know what else one or two board members say, not as private citizens, but as elected officials to other elected officials and this administration. I had an excellent education where I grew up, especially in civics, and it was instilled in me that asking questions of elected officials is not only my right, but it's my responsibility, it's everyone's responsibility. The only idea I've truly learned about this board while attending meetings over the last year is what has been done can be voted on again and possibly undone. It would take courage and conviction and asking the right questions, but it can be done, because ultimately, just because you believe yourself to be righteous, it does not mean that you are right. Since the beginning of the school year, I have listened to these same people who think this is appeal in the best interest of our taxpayers and students, calling into question, spending too much money on books for a library within our district. And this was only because they didn't remember approving renovations for that library, and that books were not acquired the year before because of those renovations. I have been to an education committee meeting where I was told initially Penncrest Cyber was not only to provide a different learning environment for those who may need it, but to afford brick-and-mortar students an opportunity to fast-track their education towards specific career paths, but unfortunately, due to increased student numbers with COVID, that's been put on hold due to lack of staff, and that hopefully in a year or two, that'll be able to start again, once the enrollment numbers go down. I have listened to board members calling into question earlier this week how students are spending money on pride projects, even though ultimately it was under budget. I even heard the superintendent go so far as to say that even though pride projects have been done in the past every other year, that this will be the last year for a while. You voted tonight to close a club account, the Maplewood Archery Club. Do you know why? I do. The teacher advisor was transferred to another building in the district. No more archery club in Maplewood. This district constantly shuffles around teachers, grade to grade, building to building. Our librarians are the same way. You have cut cafeteria workers, janitorial staff, administrative positions. You have cut funding for music, art, sports, extracurricular activities, and yet you are so emboldened to say that spending my money, my tax dollars, on this appeal is appropriate. I don't think the parents in this district care about your politics, not really. It is the only thing being discussed because you want to stand on a soapbox. I don't care about your politics. I care about my kids having opportunities for continued education after this public school. I think about my oldest in her second year of college, my senior, getting ready to go to college, my eighth grader, going to college four years after that, my fourth grader going to college eight years after that, and my kindergartner, who will spend his entire education within this district, with parents who are financially trying to assist his siblings with achieving their dreams academically and educationally, and hopefully there's enough money for him. This is a poor district, where the average two-person household income makes less than sixty thousand dollars a year, that's generous. I really think most of us think about the future and how it will be paid for. We don't need your politics. We need forward thinkers who are willing to try for sustainability, not just survival. I wanted to ask questions about finances during that emergency meeting, but I was told my questions would be rhetorical. I have been told in the past to direct my questions to the superintendent. Why should I have to ask your employee to explain why you are spending our tax dollars in the way that you are? Because you say that's how it is? Okay, I'll deal with your middleman employee in the right of, in the form of right-to-know-law requests that I'm specifically making myself. I have eight that I've already done, I have four more that I'm writing when I go home. Expect twelve Friday, tomorrow morning, and probably over the weekend, I'm writing at least five more that you'll see on Monday. Thank you.
Any additional citizens' comments on non-agenda items?
Anyone else in the audience? You have two minutes if you want to say anything.
Board member remarks?
Okay, how we gonna, let's, let's start with the, the people on Zoom. Ms. Crawl, Ms. Crawl, would you like to say anything?
Uh, no, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Thank you.
Davis?
Mrs. Davis?
Something is leaving, thank you.
Brooks? Mr. Brooks?
Um, God bless America, that's all.
Why, thank you very much. Mr. Lynch?
All right, first I wanted to say Cambridge Springs, that was a pretty good presentation. They put out a lot of information, it was well-presented, I thought they did a pretty good job. I was glad to see they have a sign language class going, that's, that's interesting, 'cause, you know, I just, nobody ever taught me that when I was at school, and I had two deaf friends, so it was interesting for that.
I don't know, not to interrupt, I don't know if the board knows, we do house in a IU five classroom of deaf and hard-to-hearing students from the county, so it's kind of come from that too, 'cause we have students within the building that are deaf.
And then the engineering class was interesting too, the bridge thing. Also, I wanted to say that Martin Luther King, the holiday is Monday, and I'm not really a big fan of having the kids off of school for that day. I think we could have presentations teaching, you know, what he felt. I don't think having the kids at home, out of school, and parents having a missed work to watch the kids went in line with any of his teachings. But that's just a personal opinion, I don't want to change policy or anything, that's a federal holiday, there's nothing that can be done anyway. You know, we could have just more understanding of what he wanted for all of us, not just his people, but all of us. You know, we could have just more understanding of what he wanted for all of us, not just his people, but all of us to be closer together. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Johnston?
Again, would like to thank Mrs. Proctor and all she's done there and let the students know. We appreciate the presentation. It was fantastic. It's good to see all of these kids getting involved. Myself, I would have loved to have an opportunity to learn sign language. Just when I had my job in law enforcement, many times I came across somebody, and if they didn't have an interpreter, it was tough for me to communicate with them, so that would have been an awesome opportunity to think that's great. Many of you know we lost a teacher at the Prairie Tech Center this past couple of weeks here. So just want to bring that to everybody's attention. That's all I have.
Mr. Valeski? Do you have any comments there?
Mr. Bo? I'd also like to thank the kids for putting the presentation together. It was fantastic. You know, I have a very small child in Secur Town, so we don't get to see what's going on in the high schools and really appreciate the kids taking the time and living together for us very well. Well thought out, well done. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, I usually guess the less word. What I have to say is this, that I, too often I hear from lots of Americans who claim that took civics, they don't know that our system of government is a republic, not a democracy. We have a democracy action that is protected by our, by our republic constitution. And that's why we have what do you call democracy, freedom to speak, to join in any religion, organization, and whatever. We are a free country, not because we're democrats, because we are a republic. Now, to answer your question about, about the appeal. The reason why it's appealed because this is a national law. No judge has the right to have judicial overreach and then come down with a decision whatever he wants. And this, and appeal is not, and not for us individuals, of any individual on the board. It's because the law. If we allow the law not to exist, such, and a good example is our President of the United States. The Kamala Mandi, who the hell is he? A dictator? We are a republic and the laws stand. And we have to obey all the laws that the republic representatives had enacted all these years, for over two-hundred forty years. Board members want to get elected and they don't give up their part of life. If somebody wants to make any statement on social media like Facebook, well, why can't they? There's no board business contracted on social media at all. If that was the reason, Mr. Brooks would have to quit posting all the time about the board business. What he's doing all the time. So what I'm emphasizing is we are a republic and that this republic stands on the laws. We don't go above the law. That's why we have a constitution, federal and state. And the Commonwealth has got its own constitution that we all have to obey, and that includes the governors or the president. So don't come, don't come over here and be little of the board because they want to kill what they feel that was unlawful. And the boards have a right to be private citizens also. You know, each, each board member over here spends their time for the community with no pay, with zero pay. We spend our own money to try to make it best for the students. And that is the fact. There might be some individuals that try to gain something personally. That's totally wrong. And I wish you stopped bringing that up. That's all I have to say right now. Thank you. Any further business?
The board met executive session on January 10th this evening to discuss personnel negotiations and litigation.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Let him adjourn.